Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And this is the meeting for the Pecosin Planning Commission, Monday, December 4th. And the first thing that we'll do is we'll have the invocation. This is purely optional on anyone's part in the audience. If they don't desire to participate, they don't have to. To be honest with you, the invocation is as much for myself as it is for anybody because I need lots of guidance in all that I do. So if you choose to join me, you're certainly welcome to. Otherwise, feel free to keep your seat. We stand for the invocation, which would be the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. And we will turn and say the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. That's it. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the regular session, October 16th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written or any corrections?
I move if we accept them as written.
Second?
Second.
Karen?
Okay. Ms. Emmett?
Aye.
Ms. Tittle?
Aye.
Ms. Fenixson?
Aye.
Mr. Gustin?
Upstate.
I'm sorry, God.
That's all right. That's quite all right. Upstate.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
Okay, so that, that, I believe that passed?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right. So next thing is the work session for October 19th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
I do have a correction, Madam Chairman.
All right, thank you.
On the third paragraph of the last page was recommended any closed school be repurposed as city offices. I'd like to have the delete as city offices. But we asked to be holding off any recommendation. I actually went back into the televised session to make sure that I wasn't supporting city offices, and it's at 50.9.
All right. Okay. Do we have, we have a motion with a correction to accept the minutes, but to correct those minutes as Lee has asked to do. So do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on those, Karen.
Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Godden?
Upstate.
Fenixson?
Aye.
Mr. Tittle?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried by, that motion was carried by a vote of four to... Oh, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Shriver.
It's a full moon there.
It is.
I think I'm going to vote aye.
Okay. So that, I was assuming that's five to one abstention.
Okay. And the next will be the work session, November 2nd, 2017. The minutes for those, do we have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. We have motion and a second. Karen?
Okay. Ms. Emmett?
Aye.
Mr. Tittle?
Upstate.
Ms. Fenixson?
Upstate.
Godden?
Aye.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
That vote, that motion was carried by a vote of four to two abstentions.
All right. And then the last minutes would be the work session of November 16th, 2017. Do we have a motion to accept those as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Godden?
Aye.
Ms. Fenixson?
Aye.
Mr. Tittle?
Aye.
Ms. Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. And moving on to the audience for visitors. Now, the audience for visitors is anyone that wishes to come forward, and they have something they want to address the Planning Commission other than a public hearing item. If you're here to speak for a public hearing item, you don't want to come up in the audience for visitors. But if it's anything other than the public hearing, please come forward and give us your name and your address, and we'll be happy to hear from you. All right. If there's no one that wishes to speak in the audience for visitors, we'll close that, and we will move on to the public hearing item, which is a request by Andrew. Now, I'm going to guess at this, Viskara.
Yes.
I hope I'm not slaughtering your name. Applicant an SGC With Creek LLC owner for a conditional use permit to authorize the establishment and operation of a tattoo and piercing studio at 475 With Creek Road, tax map parcel 27-1-107A, Zoned B2 Business. And Danan, will you be giving the...
Yes.
All right. Going to give us the details of this and fill us in on what we need to know.
All right. So before I begin, I'll just mention that for the benefit of some of our newer members who may not have had the opportunity to decide on a conditional use permit before, there should be in front of you a sheet, an excerpt from the Almoral Land Use Handbook on approving conditional use permits. That's courtesy of our new director, so you might be able to find that helpful. With that said, I'll begin with the conditional use permit presentation for 475 With Creek So the request is to establish and operate a tattoo and piercing studio within one suite of the With Creek Plaza Shopping Center that is on 475 With Creek Road. The property is currently Zoned B2 for business and general commercial. Now, tattoo and piercing studios are not specifically permitted within the B2 district. In fact, they are not mentioned anywhere in our zoning ordinance. Therefore, as per Article 1, Section 1-8 of our zoning ordinance, any applicant who wishes to establish a use not specifically permitted by the zoning code needs to submit for a conditional use permit. So here's an aerial of the property of the With Creek Plaza Shopping Center, right at the corner of With Creek Road and Victory Boulevard. And here's another map showing the zoning of the surrounding parcels. Now, everything in red is Zoned B2 Business Commercial, and everything in purple is Zoned General Commercial. As for adjacent properties, the building is flanked on the north and on the south by shopping centers, to the west by a vacant commercial property, which formerly housed the Kentucky Taco Hut, as well as a number of vacant undeveloped properties that is on general commercial. And on the east, it is ordered by the Wells Fargo Bank, as well as the offices of our local representative, Gordon Helsel. And skipped a slide, but there was another map there showing that this shopping, particular shopping center is divided into two buildings. I believe the square footage is over 40,000. But the northernmost shop, larger shopping center is home to the Anchor Store, the Taylors, Dewitt Center, and a number of other stores. The building that we're talking about tonight is a smaller retail building of about 5,000 square feet that is accessible off of Victory Boulevard, and that is the one that is down to the bottom there. So we'll move on to some pictures of the property. This is looking from Victory Boulevard north. Here's the middle of the shopping center. Here's the end of the shopping center. And one final picture of the parking lot looking south onto Victory Boulevard. So, moving on to considerations, the available shopping center is approximately 5,000 square feet and is divided into five retail suites of around 1,000 square feet each. Now, there is, I believe, a Christmas art gallery currently occupying four of those five units. However, none of them currently have permanent tenants. They are considered vacant. The property does have direct access from Victory Boulevard. Traffic and parking imparts for this use are expected to be as or less impactful than similar retail uses. This was a shopping center designed for general commercial use. And because it is located close to With Creek Road, ARB approval will be required for any signage that is proposed. Now, as for the specifics of the use, Section 54-241 of Pecosin City Code contains standards for tattooing studios. This includes regulations for disclosure, hygiene, licenses, waivers, proof of age, record keeping, inspections, cleanliness, vaccinations, and permitting. These are very similar to regulations that are in existence in nearby cities such as Hampton and Newport News, which means that this use will require the issuance of a permit from the Virginia Department of Health prior to its operation. The applicant has previously obtained a permit and a business license for the operation of a tattoo establishment in Virginia Beach. And these are some pictures the applicant has provided of, I believe, that tattooing studio, just to give you an idea of what the interior of these facilities looks like. So, moving on to proposed conditions. If recommended for approval, staff is proposing the following conditions. One, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. If any time they are violation, city council may revoke this permit. Two, the approved use permit shall only be for a tattoo and piercing studio use and shall not be interpreted for any other use that cannot be reasonably categorized as such. If the proposed use changes to another form of professional or retail service, the permit shall be evaluated by the zoning administrator. Condition three, prior to any onsite expansion of the proposed use, the zoning administrator shall review the proposal to determine whether reconsideration of this permit is necessary. Condition four, if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit will be null and void. And five, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. Those are all the conditions and the presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Do you have anything of Danan right now, before you take...
Dan, I just wanted to make sure I fully understand this. I think I do, but for everybody's benefit. We're discussing this particular request because it is not specifically approved in the commercial district, but not because there's any prohibition in the zoning ordinance or anything else in the Pecosin Code that might prevent it. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is one prohibition, and that is that tattooing parlors are specifically not permitted, but only in the Village Commercial District. They are not permitted or prohibited in any other district.
Wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dan. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing on this item. And if you would like to come up and speak to the Planning Commission, please do so, and be sure and give us your name and address at this time. Who would like to come up? Anyone?
I will, ma'am.
Okay.
My name is Mark Sawyer. I live at 46 Church Street here in Pecosin. And I'd like to appeal to the Planning Commission on a few levels. One, most of us would look back and think of tattoo shops from the 50s and 60s, and the veneer that came with them and the stereotypes. I'll be going in front of city councils, I'm sure, to go and present the same to them. My grandparents would have looked at it differently than I do. With my grown children being 35 and 33 and 24, they have tattoos. I'm a grandparent. I'm also a fellow citizen here. My parents taught me not to judge a book by its cover, so I didn't. My parents taught me to be independent, so I was. If I take my jacket off right now, I'm covered from my wrists, down my back, and all over with tattoos, none of which are offensive, and none of the studios that I went to were places that were debauchery-filled or situations that I was scared of as a child of tattoo shops. The money that I've spent would literally finance two police officers in this town for two years. Cliff would love to have that money. My point being is that the revenue that we'll generate from this is not just in that shop. Most people are going to get done with the tattoo, they're going to want to eat. Right around the corner, we have multitude of restaurants. They're going to spend their money here. We're going to bring in income from outside. The gentleman sitting behind me that's applying for this isn't some kid who picked up a gun off the internet and said, "I want to do tattoos." This man's an artist. This man's going to bring the type of people like myself in who've traveled across the country to get tattoo work done. This man's artwork is well spoken for. It's artwork. It's not just a tattoo or piercing shop. So when you think about this, he's asking to bring something into this town that's tasteful. He's asking us for an opportunity to bring something that we don't have here and bring the younger crowd in. We all know, without going into city council business or politics of the city, that the younger generation in this town is falling off. We're not replenishing our youth. We need to bring the younger people in. We need to give the people a reason to be here, and we definitely need to open our minds up to allowing businesses other than what has been the norm in the past. We need to look at that. And as members of this planning commission, I hope that you will reach deep into your souls and look a little bit further than the 12,000 residents who've lived in this beautiful town and allow ourselves to bring that income from outside. We don't need to worry about if it's going to be a bad element. If I told you about my professional life and history, you'd be shocked to see me on a Harley on Saturday covered in tattoos, rotting down the road. That stereotype is gone, and that's what we have to look at. It's not those people. I've never been incarcerated in prison. I hold a top-secret security clearance. Knowing those things, think about the type of people that could come in there. 98% of our veterans who've returned since 2001 have ink work and continue to get ink work. I'm an advocate with a nonprofit organization, and 99% of the people I deal with have ink work. It tells a story. It brings back for them the memories of those that were lost and the things that they saw. This town has a lot of military in it, whether they're transient through the Air Force Base or our naval bases. We need to look at those things as, will we rather their money be here, or do we want them to drive up 17 New York Town? Do we want them to drive south across the river or into Hampton and Newport News and give them their money? Why don't we keep it here? Please think about those things tonight when you vote, and I greatly appreciate your time.
I live at 500 With Creek, Apartment 4, right here up, right down the road. Where do I start? I'm going to introduce my crew. My partner and owner as well is Rachel Anderson. My right-hand woman is Carrie Thomas. She is a resident here as well. Her second cousin, we just found that out, CJ. On the end, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Robert. They all have key roles. I'm a combat veteran myself. I joined in '88, got out in 2012, moved here in 2013. Moved to Virginia Beach, opened up that shop in Virginia Beach. Since then, it's closed. I moved it to Powhatan. That picture, you saw the rooms, that was actually my shop. Mr. Danan, thank you. Appreciate it. It is, I grew up a Catholic boy, very strict parents. Around 18, didn't want to go to college, didn't want to go to school, didn't want to get a job. So Dad kicked me out. Tough love. Three months later, I was in the service. Stayed in for quite a while. Lost some friends, seen some combat, been around the world, didn't want to fly anymore. I don't even want to get on a plane. But when I got out, I started as a little kid drawing. And it created a sense of calmness. And when people liked it, they enjoyed it. They actually liked it. I had just the other day, a couple, actually from Pecosin, I'm going to say Remo, Ramo, Remo? Anybody know this name? They moved to Florida, lost a daughter. That was 32. Her favorite was a butterfly. Color was yellow. They actually cremated her. When they came to my studio, they told me this story. I've done thousands and thousands of tattoos. I started in 1997. An old Army buddy of mine got out of the Army real quick, started a tattoo shop in Lucasville, Ohio in 1997. I'm like, "What are you doing? That's taboo. Nobody did that." He's been retired about eight years after he got done, opened it. But that's how I picked it up. He asked, he called me one day, I was still in the service, asked me to draw a piece for a forum. Commissioned me to do a piece for him. Very quickly, I took it out there. He showed me the shot. That's when I picked up the machine. It's not a tattoo gun. Guns are for killing. He was shooting it out. It's a tattoo machine. That's what it's called. That's the proper name for it. It's a tool. It's a utensil that you use to put ink on skin. Been doing this since 1997, got licensed 2002. And the joy that I get, I've had people tell me their stories. I put it on there, I kind of create it. My style's photorealism, three-dimensional, photographic portraits. When I did that butterfly for that mother, the child that passed away, 32-year-old lady, the mother's in her 60s, had the butterfly, first one ever, had it right on top of her foot, three-dimensional. Wish I brought the picture with me, but it's actually on my phone. It looks like it's just sitting on her foot. It's an illusion on the way you shadow it. Tears rolled down. I think we all, there was not a dry eye in that. That's the joy. That's my payment. That's what I get. How's it going to help Pecosin? Bringing in money that, but it never came in in the first place. They're going to come in, and they're, I have hundreds, if not thousands, of clients just under my name. The tattoo artist, I'm really, really good friends with Ben Johnson. He is the owner of Virginia Beach Inc. He's also a retired Virginia Beach police officer. He's had now his shop seven years, doing very well, has brought in a lot of income and revenue for the city. Virginia Beach always has revenue. I want to do the same for Pecosin. I have a heart here. I have an interest in Pecosin. I'm not going to say who, but it will bring in the outside money. I think it will. I know it will. They get a tattoo, they're going to walk out, they're going to be what? They're going to be hungry. 99% of my artists or clients are hungry after they're done. When you get a tattoo, the body produces what's called a, it's a numbing agent, I forget the word for it.
Endorphins.
Endorphins, thank you. They're produced. It causes the body to deal with the pain. Once it runs out of producing, and then you start feeling the pain, that's kind of when you have to stop. You don't want the person to pass out. But when they're done, it creates a hunger, and you've got to put the energy back in the body, hydrate. And typically, they're going to leave the shop, and where they're going to go? A restaurant right down the road. This is money that's coming into the business or coming into the city that would never came in the first place. I'm, when I come into this city, if you were to approve this conditional use permit, my, there are clients from everywhere. I get them from Washington State. I get them from, I just came back from Washington State. I was commissioned to do about 22 of them out there. Was out there six days, and all I did was work. Flew back home. These are people that will come in, from Virginia Beach, Hampton, Newport News, a lot of people from Gloucester, all that area. This is money that the city would never have seen in the first place. I have had a lot of support for this, and a lot of help. I've never done this before. I've opened up shops, opened up businesses. I have a master's degree in business developmental sciences. I have a BS in marketing. I just don't see why it can't be done, or why it wouldn't, I don't see a negative to this at all. How am I going to operate my, my shop? How are we going to operate the shop? I think the statute of everybody that's there is a higher standard than what you might think or stigma of the tattoo shop. Black, Gothic, hangarounds, bikers, druggies, criminals, not here. Not at all. You're going to walk in, it's going to be very, very welcoming. The oldest person I've tattooed was 72 years old. It was a lady. She had, she lost her daughter. Wounded her name on her flowers and stuff like that. I have thousands of stories to tell. I can't see, it's streaming. Tattoos are streaming, just like anything else that's, the kids are getting it nowadays. Typically, we have, what I, for me, I'm a, I don't just do a tattoo because they want somebody. And they have to think about it. So this is permanent on their skin. They have to really have a meaning to what they want, thought out. It just doesn't, they just don't walk, for me, they just don't walk in. I have a consultation. We discuss it. Make sure that's what that person wants. They always approve it. It brings in a lot of money. A tattoo shop has very low overhead, very low, and a very high profit margin. So, in business, it's very good. Most businesses are like this. You're paying a lot. There is no, practically no overhead at all for a tattoo shop. The material that you have is very inexpensive, and you accumulate over the time. And your time, your love for the art, and those are the kind of artists we're going to have. We're not going to have druggies, we're not going to have bikers, we're not going to have any of that. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Most wish to speak.
Can you hear me? All right, good. My name is Russell Taylor, and I know a bunch of you. I'm a lifelong resident, been here, obviously, lifelong. But I just have, I guess, a few questions.
What's your address, Mr. Taylor?
Pardon?
Give us your address.
Business or...
Well, Karen, just, yeah, just for the minutes.
Well, let's just do the one right next door. How about 2A Victory Boulevard? So that is a, I guess I'm, been in the last six months in contract to buy the building that Gordon Helsel's in. And we have some plans to, you know, we've been subdividing it from the bank, and I'm sure that maybe it's gone through this board already or whatnot. And so I guess it's fair that I'm here, that I'm just the immediate neighbor of this process. But my question is a, you know, I'm going to be putting my dental practice there in that building, or that's the goal. I haven't signed the ink yet. I mean, it's been six months in the working. But my question is, and I know nothing of this matter, but if I am putting a whole bunch of investment in this location, how will this, what is it called? It's called a conditional use permit, influence my business? Positive, negative? That's just a question to the panel. I don't know. Will it have no effect? Will it have an effect? That's something that I'd just like to explore before I, you know, sign the ink and drop all this money down there. I think that's just a fair question. And, you know, how will it affect the real estate right there that I'm investing in? Will it be good, bad, negative? Will it be good, bad, negative? I don't know. So those are questions that I don't know how to get to the answers of and just like to ask the, you know, the commission regarding that. That's something I don't really, you know, know how that will go. And another thing that I was kind of interested, interested in is a, with the Walmart thing, Pecosin citizens had a fit with that, you know, and I guess that didn't go anywhere. And sometimes they've sent out a survey in the past, and if something needs a conditional, was it conditional use permit, is a survey recommended? I mean, should we, you know, vote on something, think about it? I don't know how these things work. But I'm wondering, you know, a lot of these matters that people do feel about, no one ever is really aware or really even involved or concerned with them until things pop up. And then people retroactively say, oh, I didn't know that happened, or why did this happen? And if it is a concern, it wouldn't be a bad idea to address the, the, the people of Pecosin, how they feel about whether they're positive or negative. So that's, I guess, question two. And a, not that, you know, that matters too much on this issue. But I was talking with, I believe it's Travis Baker. He's the guy who's running that shopping center there for the Cooper family. And this, you know, our conversation's been back and forth a little bit. And I was talking to some of my fellow friends at Riverside, and I don't know if we can pull it off, but I was pushing to see if we could get a medical facility there that would complement us. Or, and if that wouldn't work out, a coffee shop. I don't know. I mean, I'm just full of questions today. Is there any comments on anything of such, or?
Amen.
You can comment later at the end?
Uh-huh, when we take this under consideration.
But, you know, I think Andrew's a, you know, a veteran and a fantastic guy, and I enjoy, you know, a good citizen. And just, you know, I just want to make sure that, and I think it's fair, unfortunately, I don't think, I don't think it's fair that there's stigmas associated with many things in this world. And I don't think that's fair. I just, and I don't know, it would probably be a sociology question as how that would influence things. And I don't know. Maybe it'll help, maybe it won't, and I don't know. I would like, maybe if the commission could address some ways to look into that or, you know, help me be reassured before I make a big plunge if that's a positive or a negative thing for me to put in that corner or whether it has no influence whatsoever. So that's it. Fair enough?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, if nobody else has anything else to say, we will go ahead and take this under I think probably we'll all have a little something to say. Anybody wish to go first?
Madam Chairwoman, would it be possible to speak with Mr. Viscaras to ask a few questions?
Let's have him come up.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Come on up.
I'm sure others have questions too, so I'll just go ahead and start. One thing that wasn't addressed in the presentation is how many artists or piercers, how many employees or artists do you expect to have?
You're looking at the crew?
Okay.
Plus three. Yep. They're, I'm hiring three artists. There are just not going to be any more artists. They have to go through, obviously, I want to see their art, and there's many different styles. So, and we have already discussed how we're going to operate the shop. Dr. Taylor wants to put a dental office in there. It's respectable. And I thank you for your comments. I can help you with some of those questions. It's going to be experience in this, very much. I have a couple shops already, one in California, one here. But to answer your question, three artists, and those five people that I get.
And then one will be a dedicated piercer, or is it?
Actually, I have one that's going in training right now. He is currently in the Navy. He is a police officer in the Navy, I believe, yes. He's actually going to learn. My partner, Rachel, I actually apprenticing her, okay? And then Carrie, Robert, CJ, they're going to be, they all have positions there. One's security, one's front, one's operations, one's administration. We're going to run, and it's kind of funny that you're a dentist, because that's how I want our shop to look. When you walk in, it's very plush, very clean, very welcoming, very warm. You're not going to have those bikers coming up and you have a hundred bikes in the parking lot. It's not like that. I have people like yourself coming in. I have doctors coming. I have lawyers.
So I guess on that note, so if there was a parent and they wanted to get their kid's ears pierced, a thirteen-year-old, say, and they didn't want to go to a mall kiosk, would they be able to go to your establishment for something like that to give their, you know, thirteen-year-old ear pierce? Would that be welcoming? Would that be an appropriate place?
There are laws that my shop has to abide by.
Right.
The shop itself has to have a license by GPR, not just the artist as well. It is not called piercing. It's called body piercing. There's a difference. One, the gun punches. The other one, it's a, like a needle, if you will, that is hollow in the middle. It's extremely sharp. It goes through and it actually removes tissue as it goes through. That is, it's actually a lot better than just punching the skin.
Right.
But yes, it is available if they want. They have to be a certain age. If they are minors, they are allowed up to a certain age, and that is sixteen years old. And they have to have a legal parent and guardian. In order to prove that, they have to bring me a birth certificate. Did I help you with that?
Yes, yes. No, thank you. And then you talked also about you are going to be a custom, kind of custom shop, so walk-ins, you encourage having a consultation?
I'm a custom artist. You can go to a standard artist, which does, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Right.
There's many different styles. Main one's American tradition. It's that Sailor Jerry look, that standard look that you see in the sailors wear. I'm custom. Bring me a photograph. I'll make it look like it's real, or a photograph on you. I sent some pictures to Mr. Dan, and I'm not sure if he bought them at all, but I can show you at any time he wants. Go to my Facebook. There's millions of pictures on there. But yeah, the shop's going to be a custom shop. It's going to be a higher grade. But I also want people to come in. The talent that I have is God-given. That's how I see it. I want to share it. My payment's that. And when you come in, if you have a small piece, come in, you quote it. If I think it's reasonable, I'll do it for you. I'm not going to charge you a mortgage payment, like they usually do. I want that welcoming. I want more people to enjoy the art.
And then one last question is, what are your anticipated hours of operation?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Your hours of operation? What do you think your hours are going to be?
Typically, they stay open late, not this one. This one, every, I notice about eight, nine o'clock, they roll up the sidewalks here about eight, nine o'clock. That's about what time we're going to shut down, about eight, nine o'clock. We're going to open up at twelve noon. So no late nights, no. And always one of us will be present in the shop during closing, during operation of it, always one. During closing, there'll be two because of obvious reasons, and an opening will be one. It'll be one of us. I might have a, what they call a lead artist. He typically holds a management position, but I have enough people to hold that, so I probably won't have that.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else before he has a secret?
I have one question, a couple of questions, actually. How much do tattoos cost? I mean, you were talking about tax revenue. How much do you pay for a tattoo? I'm curious.
It depends on a lot of different.
I figured. I mean, there's a wide range.
If you're coming in and you're just going to get a flash, it's only a few questions. I mean, give your little time. This is a very not secret thing that the individual can learn.
If you were, if you would just talk right into that, because people home want to.
I like to walk when I talk. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'd talk better, I guess. Typically, if you take a dollar bill, if you're going to get some work done on your arm, extensive work, aggressive work, there's many, many sessions. But the way we tend to price it is either by the hour, and standard price around here is about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I can get away with two hundred an hour. I've been doing this for twenty years, but I, I won't. I want everybody to share it. Not everybody can afford that. Two hundred dollars an hour is ridiculous. It's highway robbery. But it's usually a dollar is one hundred dollars. How many dollars does it take to cover that tattoo? That's about how much it is.
Is there a, is there way much tattoo establishments are graded? In other words, like, are they graded at all? In other words, like, let's say you really want to get a good tattoo, you know nothing about it, do you go, like, do callers have, like, a certain rating or something, you know, to say how good they are? I mean, I'm curious, because you see on TV, like, you know, there's all the shows and everything, and it's gotten quite popular, and I was curious, you know, so, like, are you a class A type? I don't know. I'm just curious. Is there anything like that?
There's many different ways, obviously. You can go on Google and review them. You can go to the website and review. Facebook has review. And these are reviews by their clients, typically. But if you're going to go get a tattoo and you know nothing about it, you need to shop, just like anything else. If you know nothing about the Mercedes or that BMW or that Ford or that, you're going to go shopping. You're going to learn about it, research it. I invite new customers to do that. Very important, when you walk in, and this is the typical of a tattoo shop, when you walk in, they don't even greet you. I'm going to make so much money out of that old shop and bring it in here because of my customer service. I don't know, have any of you, have any of you been in a tattoo shop before? Anyone? You have. How were you greeted?
Uh... I'll get into, the first one, it was just one individual there, so it was greeted pretty promptly.
But did he care about what you wanted? Did he give you attention? Did he say hi, Hawaii, introduce himself?
I've had pretty decent experiences, I would say.
Typically, you don't. That's very rare. Maybe because he was the only one.
I've just been lucky.
I've walked in shops during my research and opening up a business for the first time. I literally went to every shop. And that's how I met Ben Johnson, by the way. But typically, it's, unless you're spending money, they're not going to really, yeah, okay, okay, yep, you can look at the books over there, da-da-da-da. In our shop, we don't do that. We treat it just like, per se, Dr. Taylor's office. You walk in, you're going to be greeted. You go through the motion. You talk about what's being done, consultation, let's go this route, let's go this route. Because the artist is knowledgeable, and they might not know something. Two heads are better than one. So when you come in, that's how you're going to be greeted at this shop. Very high, high-end. That's what we're trying to do.
Go to a tattoo parlor and, and a shop and get one the first time they walk in?
I'm sorry, sir?
How many people, what percentage of your clients, are clients typically walk into a tattoo parlor and get the tattoo that same day or think about it or shop around?
Usually, it's that same day. I want to say seven out of ten get it. Seventy percent. If you take a hundred, I'm, my phone's probably got five appointments right now. It goes off every day, every day, wanting, wanting, wanting. Rachel saved me because I didn't, I was not, I was so busy, she created an agenda for me, a calendar, and it's actually pretty simple. It worked. I didn't know how to use it, so. But yeah, typically, a lot of, I've had people that never had tattoos. They think it's going to be very, very painful. I'm not going to lie to you. It is painful, but it's, it's bearable. I'm extremely light-handed. You get artists that are heavy-handed. You're not even supposed to pass through the, all the layers of the skin. Just nick the skin, bleed a little bit, maybe, and that's about it. Yeah. That's what I look for in an artist when I go to hire. I want to see how heavy-handed they are. I want to see if they're going to leave keloids or scars. I want to see how their hygiene is. It's very, very important. I'm responsible for that client's health. It is at risk. Very little, but it is. So everything needs to be cleaned, sanitized. It's just like a doctor's office. That's how you have to treat it.
Name of your parlor, could you?
Bull Island Inc.
Are there any other locations when you were doing your market research?
I have. Hampton, it's the same process unless you are going into a already established tattoo shop that's already been approved by the city. If it's not, it's a three-month process and it's much more expensive.
Out in the city of Pecosin, did you look at any other locations?
I have. I looked at two other places and it was not, I'm not going to say the name, but who owned it, but it was not appealing, let's just say.
What does this location provide for your business?
Do you know where the vape shop is in the Hookah Lounge? There's one right next to it. I think you ever been who owns that? Does anybody know? Owner of the first place I looked at right next to the vape shop, right across from Georgia's? Yeah. Anyways, it's right next to the vape shop. We looked at there. There wasn't really much of anywhere else that we could look. It's an extremely small area and not much vacancy. That entire plaza was open, and it was Zone B2, which is good for a salon, which we typically fall under, the same as a salon. That's when I looked into it, and that's when I found out it's the only thing that's restricted from a B2, even though it should fall under it. Pecosin's never had one, probably because of its stigma. It's a very tight-knit community, which I like. I'm, born and raised from Sacramento, California. My dad's from Sicily, my mother's from Spain. I'm firstborn, generated here in California. So I didn't know everybody like you know everybody. So yes, to answer your question, ma'am, that one other place, I think it was one other place after that, but it was too far down by the tide. I didn't want it flooded.
I have two questions, if you would. For one, could you tell me which suite, which part of the building you're planning on occupying? It was like the one on the left, one in the middle?
If you're looking at the building, there's three of them. You have where the restaurant used to be, then there was something in the middle. I don't know what that was. It's a much smaller one. I think it's about five hundred, eight hundred square feet. And then the one at the very end where the cleaners used to be. That is the proposed location. I've already talked to the owners, which is on the.
Right, so the cleaners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second question would, I guess, would be, how many patrons, customers, would you expect to see in a location like that, you know, that size of a studio, in an average day? How many?
Average day after opening and all that, the big hype, I see it anywhere from five to ten people, and that's a lot. You don't want much more than that, but you can only, an artist can only get two to three, depending on size, depending on aggressiveness of the, of the tattoo, planning. A lot of it has to do, you never put your stuff or your equipment together before. You do it right in front of them, so there's no question. They know they're getting sterile needles. They know they're getting sterile irons. They know they're, everything's clean, everything's new. So it starts from that process. But the biggest process, longest process, is creating what that person wants, and that's the artist's job. It can take an hour and a half, two hours. Typically, they'll leave, go eat, if it's a couple or a group of people. They'll leave, come back in an hour and a half, two hours. He'll have it ready, sit down. They go through the process of payment, process of medical questions. There's a consent form that they are asked, very specific questions on your health. Certain ones get answered negatively. Typically, we do not work on them for that reason. Heart problems, blood, and you may, it could be anything. But seven to ten people is on average, is good to have about five or six, and that's typical. Slow day, which, slow time of the year is right now. I want to say, and the latter part of November, all of December, all of January, and then it kind of picks back up in February. Obviously, taxes are coming back. That is the biggest time of the year.
And in the location, you would have, like, one chair, a one person getting a tattoo at a time, or would there be more than one chair?
There are, well, like I was answering Ms. Emmett's question, typically, three to four artists. I am one. She's an apprentice, so she'll do certain things. I can have all four chairs, three artists, because that's what I told Ms. Emmett, and myself, until I retire. There will be four chairs, myself and her, which is one chair. We share it. It's the biggest one. It's also a private one. Sometimes people get tattoos in areas we don't want to see. So we keep a private booth. The other ones are open booths, and there's three of them. You can have all three of them, all four of them, right at the same time. Sometimes, for me, sir, sometimes I also stop if he's a piercer. He'll go do piercing, change his gloves, come back and continue. It's not unusual to take a break from a tattoo.
Thank you.
All right, if you want, if nobody else has it.
I have one more.
You have enough?
Yes, thank you. Inquisitive. So now, you still have your shop in Virginia Beach?
No, ma'am.
Or you're going to be moving?
Since then, it's been closed. Virginia Beach wants to get their hands in everything. It's very expensive to have one, one out. It's actually getting easier now. But when I opened it, Virginia Beach had just allowed it prior, maybe two years, prior to that. So it's been very short. So it's been very short.
And tell me, tell me about your neighbors in the Virginia Beach location. Was it also in a, a strip mall?
It was in a strip mall.
And what, what kind of neighbors did you have?
I was actually upstairs.
Okay.
Um, when I found that building, it's, it's all, it's B2, but it had conditions. The conditions were you could not be six hundred feet from a sh, a school, another tattoo shop, or a residential area. You had to be clear of all that. So space is limited. And you might find a B2, but if you don't fall in one of those, or all of those conditions, you cannot put one there. This particular place I found was right on the boulevard, uh, right next to the main intersection where the city center is. I was just outside that. That's considered a, uh, I can't think of the word, but it, you can't put a tattoo shop there. But it was in a strip mall, it was upstairs, it was hauled out, I put in the floors, I did it all by myself, by myself. If I found somebody who wanted to do it, if they wanted to barter some inkwork, he would look at my work, he liked it, I'd do it, he'd do the plumbing.
So I guess where I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, uh, your business neighbors, did they have any issues being next to a tattoo shop, or did that affect their business? Did you talk to them?
No.
Any effects?
I wanted to talk to Dr. Taylor about that, because I, I wanna ease his, or reassure his worries about the, who, who am I gonna attract based on his business? Am I gonna hurt his business based on what I'm attracting? I understand what you're saying. I think that was his first question, and your question as well. Again, the shop typically now, because it's streaming, doesn't bring in criminals, doesn't bring in druggies, doesn't bring in mischievous people. It brings in people like yourself, myself. I've worked on her, him, her, him, and her. I've worked on all of them. I've worked on Crystal. Um, matter of fact, that piece on her arm right there. That's the majority of my people. You're not gonna have any criminals at all. We're not gonna, we're not gonna deal with it. She works for Virginia State Troopers, I'm a retired Army guy, I, I have other police officers that are in the Navy, we're not gonna have that. Artists are not gonna be, if you will, typical nodding out, doing artwork, no, they're not.
I think the question was, who were your neighbors?
Who were my neighbors? At a salon?
Yeah, the, the other, other businesses than yours, the strip-
Over there, I had a salon beneath me, I didn't quite understand the question, sometimes I can go. Uh, and next door, I had two Navy SEALs that were operating a gun safety, so they had a lot, and they had their own firing range, which was, it didn't bother me, because I was in the military. Some people it might have bothered. But, uh, who else? I had a tire shop there. I had furniture shop, and that's about it. I think the other spaces were empty. Yep.
Is your, is the establishment that you used to operate there, is that being operated at all now, or is it vacant?
It's vacant now. Uh, I don't know, I haven't been over there to see who's in it, or if there isn't, but the way you saw it, that's the way I loved it. That floor, that checkered floor, that's the way I loved it. I moved it to Powhatan, standalone building, right on Courthouse Road, right down the road is, uh, the courthouse. It's still called Dr. Ink's Tattoo and Piercing Gallery, and it's a standalone building. It's got a warehouse in the back, it's got two apartments above, it's zoned, commercial, residential. So you can, my two, my manager and, uh, my lead artist, uh, lives above the studio. Typically, it's right, it's, but that shop's located right in, right in the municipal area. Mm-hmm. You're not gonna, I just wanna, if I may, ma'am, if I may, Ms. Schreiber, uh, I wanna, I'm trying to ease the stigma of what a tattoo shop. When you hear the word tattoo, obviously, you're, it's streaming. You'll be amazed at people that come and get tattoos. Spend that money. A daughter died, a dad, a kid's born, they want the name on it. It's not like it was back in the seventies, sixties, fifties, or even the eighties, it was taboo back in the eighties. It's streaming. It's, it's a, it's an every-now thing. And that, and the toughest thing is to break that stigma that it used to carry back then. We're not there anymore. We see a vape shop here in Pecosin, that wasn't gonna happen back then, a, a hookah bar, a massage parlor. You, you don't see a tattoo shop. It sounds like they're coming, oh, criminal, no. It's not. I promise you, it's not. I wouldn't be in the business if it wasn't, at all. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. One more question.
I just had one question, I'm sorry to throw this in at you on, on last minute. Uh, I got hours of operation and employees, but what days are you gonna, days you're gonna be closed?
Um, we have several days off for all of us, but typically, they're open in the area.
Oh, I, I was, you know, it certainly appreciate Dr. Taylor's, uh, concern, uh, and, and I, you know, I had this thought when you were expressing that concern. I, I work for Dr. David Forrest, who is an orthodontist in Oyster Point. And, um, I would say, now, I'm, I'm just gonna say this to you, and certainly, this is just something to think about, but if you, if you literally knew how many of your patients had tattoos, you may be surprised. Some of them would not be visible, but I am amazed at the number of people that come in our office that have tattoos. Now, I'm, I, I will have to agree with the gentleman when he says there is certainly a stigma. And I will admit now to something that I've never admitted to publicly. First, I don't have a tattoo. I'm gonna tell you that since I was a small child, I actually had a fascination with a tattoo that my grandfather had on his left hand. Now, by the time I saw this tattoo, my grandfather was in his eighties, he had been in the Merchant Marines in the, probably the late, I would say, the early nineteen hundreds. The tattoo was probably acquired in some horrible place in a area where ladies probably would not have gone, and probably, uh, the people who received the tattoos probably had, had something to drink before and were in an inebriated state. But nonetheless, in my first recollection of him is that tattoo. Now, the tattoo had faded a great deal, it wasn't like the beautiful tattoos that you see today, but I was fascinated with that tattoo. Now, that fascination has continued. My husband worked with a man in the seventies whose goal was to be completely tattooed all over, and whenever we had Christmas banquets, I had to sit by him and ask him about all of his tattoos. Because I really thought they were just intriguing, and the work was, was artwork. Uh, when I worked at the city here, I worked, worked at the Commissioner of Revenue's office, a friend of mine who I have known and actually babysat him when he was a kid, came in, and he has this beautiful, large arm, and on that is a Indian chief, and it's just, I mean, he comes in, he has this tank top, and it's beautiful. And he's, he's not a bad person, none of these people that I knew, you know, they're, they're, none of them, it was that stigma. Now, with that said, my son got married in May, and he married a lovely girl, and she is heavily tattooed. Yes, there is, there was a stigma, it was a stigma, uh, against tattoos. But now, I think they are considered probably more along the lines of artwork. Now, I can't say how it is going to affect your business, I don't believe that it will affect you probably in a negative way, but I certainly have no way of guaranteeing that. Um, I do know that many people today, and I, I, it's just amazing to me how many do, it's almost like, I think, fewer people don't have some form of a tattoo. Nonetheless, with that said, I, I can't say that I would be opposed to this, because I do know there are a lot of regulations that go along with it, um, you know, they have to be heavily, heavily regulated, um, but, I mean, I think it, I think it would be a lucrative thing here, and I think there would be people who would come here for it. I know York County has one up on seventeen, close to Cook Road. I know they have one, I pass it all the time, and I don't see a lot of, you know, bad things happening there, and I doubt it's decreased the values of the, the people there. People now just don't seem like they have any, I mean, it, it's definitely changed about it. I mean, I, you had, you kinda have to think, you know, think about it in light of today, and with all the television programs which show, you know, and like this gentleman was saying, um, I mean, I've certainly watched them, and it's, a lot of people very sentimental about their tattoos and feel very, you know, very, um, like it's a way of remembering someone, and, you know, I just, I don't, I don't really, I'm not really scared of it. I mean, I guess, you know, some people may be, I'm not, uh, and, you know, I kinda feel like it would be good for the city. I don't think it's gonna bring in, you know, just buco's of people that will be bad for the city. I think it would bring in, I do think people would frequent the other businesses, um, you know, I think that is definitely something that would, would be, you know, would be good, the restaurants and so forth, so, you know, yep, I'm, I'm kinda thinking, I'm thinking probably this would be something, it would be a good location for it, um, in that, in the cleaner section there that was a cleaner, so...
If, if I may-
Yep, that's all I've gotta say.
I think I probably gonna agree with you, I'm gonna say that, like, Chair, I have no tattoos either, but I certainly have no opposition to folks who have them. Uh, I, I think we, we ought to be really careful, that we, we are not being asked to make a moral judgment as to whether tattoos are good, bad, or indifferent. The reality is, if, if somebody in Pecosin wants to get a tattoo, there are a lot of places around here where they can get them already. So, you know, that's not really the factor. The question is, is it good for the city, is it good for the population, does it make sense to have a, a similar operation here in the city? And then I think about it, I realize, I, I think in this day and age, this is sort of like, um, I like, 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 it's, it's a, it's a personal, uh, service, not terribly unlike, uh, nail salons, or hair salons, or massage parlors, or those kinds of things, which we got lots of. So I, I personally would have a, I would have a real difficult time coming up with a reason that we should say no. Now, I'm not trying to influence anybody else that's there, but I've thought about this a lot, and we've known about it for about six weeks now, and I, I just can't really see why th, this would be bad for anybody. That's just my opinion.
I would echo what you said, Chairwoman, I think that the, what helps businesses are other vibrant businesses nearby. I would think, for your case, Dr. Taylor, having that vacant, empty space next to, that's, I, I don't, I, it's, it's urban blight, right? It's just, it's unsightly. I would, I would much rather see three or four vibrant, profitable stores, and I would think that that would only help you if they were successful in their location, and it drew traffic, drew business into that, into that, um...
And they'll see your office there. I mean, that, that's kinda the way I was thinking about it. They, you know, they might come for a tattoo, but then they think, well, you know, hey, there's a dentist office here. I mean, so that could work to your advantage.
They're scared of needles, they're gonna sell them that store to you.
They're not, you know, hey, you know they're not gonna be scared to come see you-
You might be able to buy in bulk, and shares, or something.
I mean, it could, very well, it could be like a good advertisement. He may even put some cards over there, you know, and, y'all could refer each other, I mean-
Somebody that, you know, the mouth is kinda screwed up, and says, hey, Dr. Taylor's right there.
That's right, that's right.
He's got payment plans.
He's good.
I, I am absolutely, I may be the only person on this panel that has a tattoo, but I'm absolutely for those. I, I think if it eliminates some urban blight, if it, uh, brings some, and it's an, it's, this, this is the only one, right? With the Walmart, all, the, the big pushback was you're gonna drive the other supermarkets out.
No competition.
There's no competition. Like you said, the closest one would be up on seventeen, you know, ten, fifteen minutes away, so...
It's right next to the Walmart, no matter what.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So...
Well, let, let's cut to the quick, unless somebody else has anything else to say, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend approval of the request.
Have a second?
Second.
Karen? Ms. Emmett?
Aye.
Mr. Tittler?
Aye.
Ms. Nixon?
Uh...
Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye. Now, understand that we have passed this, and that means we have recommended it. It goes to the City Council, they make the ultimate decision with their vote. So, if you take it to the City Council and give your point of view, it'll be coming up when?
January.
In January. And...
Second Monday in December, in January. Second Monday.
It's gonna be hard, we'll have to let you know, probably.
So y'all are welcome to go in front of them and speak to, or anyone that's against it, they can speak as well. All right. We'll go ahead and take up old business, which-
Can I ask one point of clarification?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
When the Planning Commission recommended approval, was that to go with all the conditions recommended?
Yes. As you, as you had it written, yes. Uh, the, is, was that, okay, yeah, that's what I intended. Okay. All right, go ahead, go. We'll go on to old business, which is continued consideration of a proposed amendment to Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the definition of half-story. So, and, yeah, we'll go ahead with that one.
Okay. So, in my presentation for an updated definition of half-story, or Article 1, Section 1-3 of our zoning ordinance, uh, now, this was first brought to the Planning Commission as a consequence of the accessory structure height amendment, I believe. I believe it was, it's Jim and Travis who brought this up, um, the definition of stories and half-stories, and we took a look at those definitions and realized that a lot of the language in, um, was either somewhat antiquated or needlessly complex. We presented amended definitions of those two definitions, um, and during that time, we, uh, received comment that the proposed definition of half-story may not be sufficient. Um, so here's the current definition of a half-story. A space under a sloping roof which has the line of intersection of roof decking and wall face not more than three feet above the top floor level, and in which space not more than two-thirds of the floor area is finished off for use. So we received a comment from one of the Planning Commissioners that the intersection of roof decking and wall face, um, three feet above the top floor level may be somewhat restrictive in that it should be amended to five feet, as there is a five-foot standard for assess, assessors when assessing the square footage of a property. They measure from the roof to the floor, whenever it's five feet, that's when they start measuring inward to calculate the square footage of a home for assessment purposes. Now, we did some research on this, and we did find that indeed our city's assessor does use a similar standard for assessing square footage of a home. It is a pretty standard thing to use five feet, um, in most city assessment departments. However, we are suggesting that we not make this change specifically for cases in which someone has a very highly sloped roof, such as a mansard or a gamma roof, and I have, um, an example picture right here. So if someone were to construct a home with a very high, um, highly sloped roof, they could have inner walls that are in excess of fi, of three feet, or even five, four feet, six feet, seven feet up to, and including basically, uh, a whole story that is underneath that roof. It would be under a sloping roof, it would be the same height as a regular story, it would have similar square footage, however- However, this would be considered a half-story if that line was not in the definition. And it doesn't really seem fair to call that a half-story when it's effectively a full story. So we've decided to keep that language in. However, we have made some additional changes to the end of the proposed definition. So the proposed change is as follows. A heated space under a sloping roof which has the line of intersection of roof decking and wall face not more than three feet above the top floor level, and in which space the finished floor area does not exceed two-thirds of the floor area immediately below it, and does not contain an independent dwelling unit. So the change to a heated space follows from the definition of story, which we've successfully changed. So we've reworded this two-thirds requirement to be two-thirds of the floor area immediately below it. We thought that was a fairer definition. And finally, we've added this line to the end of the definition. This was taken basically from the City of Newport News' current code, that we would not allow independent dwelling units to be considered half-stores if they're included above it. We thought this was relevant because the only time in which a half-story is mentioned in our current zoning ordinance is as a height restriction for the Village Commercial District. In Village Commercial, you cannot build more than three and a half stories tall. And just given the precedent in this city regarding height limits and buildings above three stories, we thought it would be prudent to not allow independent dwelling units. So you could not effectively build a four-story apartment complex by right in the Village Commercial District. So we've decided to make this change. I hope I've explained that right. It's a very lengthy change we've decided to make. But I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
I suppose, not really a question, but just, just something I wasn't sure of. I mean, I remember reading that the real reason we're even discussing this is because it, there is a half-story authorization in the Village Commercial.
Correct.
Boom. Does this, is there any necessity to make this potential change, make, make the developers of a legacy aware of this potential change? Might this impact anything that they're thinking about doing? Because to best of my knowledge, they are the only players in Village Commercial at this particular point in time.
Well, they are not technically part of Village Commercial. They are actually separate since they are a planned unit development. So their height restrictions were determined by City Council at the time of the approval of their master plan. So they're not subject to Village Commercial's height restrictions.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. I wasn't sure of that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anna. All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. And if anyone has anything they'd like to say on it, please come forward. I don't think we're going to have anybody. We'll close it, and we'll go ahead and take this under consideration. Thoughts, concerns?
As I said the last couple of times, I feel bad because I started this with just a very simple question and it's going on for about seven months now.
I know.
I really didn't mean to be anywhere near this complex.
Thank you for coming.
But, you know, I, I think that, given the consideration of Village Commercial, they've done as good a job as they can of defining it, and I, I think we probably ought to, I have no problem with it unless somebody else does. I'm going to recommend we approve it and let's get it off the plate.
Good recommendation. So you're making a motion?
Well, I didn't want to cut off anybody else's discussion. I will if anybody wants to discuss, I'll make that motion.
It looks like everybody might be.
Okay, then I make that motion.
All right. We need to have a second.
Second. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Gordon?
No, Mr. Gordon's not here.
Ms. Finixon?
Aye.
Mr. Tittler?
Aye.
Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That vote was carried, that motion was carried by a vote of five to zero.
Karen, you're having a night like that. Sometimes you don't feel good tonight, I know. All right, so that passed, and now we'll go on. Anything y'all would like to communicate with us at this point?
I have one thing, and that is I'd like to bring up the subject of the work session for the comprehensive plan for the new year. And what I'd like to propose is something that we had thought of last week, which is we would resume work sessions, I believe it was the third week of January, right after the time that would be your regularly scheduled public hearing, regular session. We would bring up the next work session then in January to discuss the remains of the environmental chapter. And then we would, we would continue to do them on Thursdays at the same time. We would resume the work sessions from there, probably either one or two work sessions, again at two-week intervals for the month of February, to finish up the land use chapter. Does anyone have suggestions? Did they find that acceptable as a work schedule? Okay.
Other than those things, let's get it done.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
Okay.
Karen, you have anything you need to pull as a, you know, have everybody know your impressions?
All right.
We'll be seeing you till after.
That's all right. We sure will. Angie?
I just want to say I appreciate the, the email correspondence that we received for the public hearing item, and I appreciate spoke, folks who showed up and came out and spoke up during the public hearings. I really, I really appreciate when, when folks come out and do that.
Likewise. I mean, on a happy holiday wish, and it's nice to see the civic process and, you know, everything in, in use, you know. So many nights we'll sit here and, we all have people, so, you know, it was nice to see the, you know, hopefully everybody will get along, and it looks like it's a good thing for everybody.
I'd like to thank Karen very much for her wonderful minutes. I mean, that was a lot of work. You had three work sessions plus two, two city, you know, two planning commissions, and a good job.
Excellent.
I know it's a lot to keep up with discussions, so. And I think I'd like to extend a thank you to Debbie, sitting back there. I'm, I'm not sure how long we'll be seeing, but I just wanted to extend my personal thank for everything you've done for the commission, and we wish you well.
Let me echo what Bonnie said. I wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Hope you have a great time. Hope you don't get snowed in this weekend. They are predicting flurries, and that's probably enough.
Those are weather guys.
That's right. Forget those are weather guys. And best to you.
With that said, I'm going to go to the podium for a minute. Debbie, to come up here? No, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to make you happy.
Okay.
Debbie, on behalf of all of the people on Planning Commission, all the members, we, we decided that we wanted to just give you a little something to let you know how much we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
And we really are going to miss you, and we just, you know, but we wish you the happiest retirement, and we hope that you'll turn up every now and then. If you see we're not doing something, you know, right exactly, come on by and give us a.
Don't worry, I will.
She will. She'll keep turning up. But you've done an outstanding job in helping me personally. I appreciate it. And I think everyone would say the same thing. I don't think anybody's ever come to you with a question that you haven't tried to answer or help or assist if someone needed help. So, but you are leaving, I think you're leaving things in real good hands. We're, we're real happy to have, have our new planning director, so we're happy.
I'm very pleased with Wally.
Wally's doing a great job.
I think Danin is doing a great job, and so is Karen as well.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
You all are being left in good hands, and I appreciate the opportunity, not only to work for this Planning Commission, but to work for this city for 36 years.
Good luck. We wish you the best of luck. Thank you. Wish you the best of luck. With that being said, we will, I'm going to say Merry Christmas to everyone and hope you have a happy new year, happy, I hope Merry Christmas is safe and sound and with your families and friends and filled with all good things. So we will be back here the first of the year and ready to resume our duties with the comprehensive plan, as Danin's reminded us tonight. He's not going to let us forget it. And he's going to call me in case I forget a meeting. Somebody is, Karen. Because Bill does not particularly want to do that in any way. Y'all have a good holiday. Thank you.